Call to order this regular monthly meeting of the Planning Commission dated October 8th, 2025. Thank everyone for attending. Before we begin, I'd like to state that the Planning Commission meetings are open to the public in person and via a Microsoft Teams streaming application. All Planning Commission meeting information can be found on the Town of Monument website. The Planning Commission's role is to conduct public hearings and to make recommendations for the Town Council regarding land use matters in the Town of Monument. Each Commissioner agrees to a nonpartial, objective, and fair review, which includes no prejudgment of the projects. Should a Commissioner wish to disqualify him or herself for any conflicts of personal or financial interest in this matter before us tonight, please say so now. For those attending tonight who wish to provide comment on agenda items, you may speak to the Commission during the public comment sections of the agenda. Those who attend in person will be called upon first and are asked to come to the podium and sign in with your name and address. Those attending via Microsoft Teams will be called upon next and are asked to utilize the "raise your hand" option and unmute your microphone when called upon. We ask that if multiple people have the same comment, only one person speak on that same subject. Again, thanks for attending tonight's meeting. We'll now begin with the roll call.
Thank you. Chair Ugly.
Here.
Vice Chair Peterson, no response. Commissioner Green. Commissioner Hatch, no response. Commissioner Hours.
Here.
Commissioner Parr.
Here.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Here.
Lastly, Commissioner Baumler.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. And since we have a couple of open chairs tonight, we'll be appointing alternate Commissioner Baumler. He's hereby appointed as a regular member for tonight's meeting. Please all stand for the pledge of allegiance. First order of business will be the approval of the minutes from last month's record short meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes or make any alterations? I'll move that we approve the minutes from last month's meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ray, can you take the roll, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair Ugly.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Parr.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Baumler.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Six in favor and no opposed.
Thank you. Tonight, we have one item before us. It's a public hearing and includes recommendations. Our first case, case number 25MON-PFPUD00001 and 25MON-PFP00003, request for the approval of the preliminary planned unit development and preliminary plat for the Legacy at Jackson Landing and the final planned unit development and the final plat for Legacy at Jackson Landing Phase 1, located at the southwest corner of Blevins Buckle Trail and Jackson Creek Parkway. This case has been noticed for public hearing, and we have a presentation by staff.
Well, thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Dan Ungerleiter. I'm the Planning Director for the Town of Monument, and I'll be presenting this case before you tonight. I appreciate you reading the new case numbers. It makes us sound like government official having all those numbers and letters, but it does tie back to our community core system, which is where we handle all of our permits and planning applications as well. So, thank you for reading that out. As you noted, Chair, pursuant to the Land Development Code, we have provided notice with the assistance of the applicant for tonight's public hearing. The record short meeting that we had on September 10th was, in fact, opening and continuing the public hearing to tonight for this case. Legacy at Jackson Landing, the applicant's name is Chris Hakey from Legacy Development Partners. The project, as you described, is at the southwest corner of Blevins Buckle Trail and Jackson Creek Parkway. Notably, to the north is Monument Marketplace, which is a planned unit development, including Home Depot, Kohl's, Walmart, and various other retail uses. To the west is Highway I-25. To the east is a vacant Higbee Road subdivision, and to the south is Monument Industrial and Community Commercial. Monument Industrial, of course, is on the other side of the highway. Yes, sir. There. See how this works. Now you can see that the public hearing was posted and the location information that I just described. The request before you tonight is a preliminary planned unit development and a preliminary plat for Legacy at Jackson Landing and a final planned unit development and a final plat for Phase 1 of Legacy at Jackson Landing. Here's some more information about the site itself. We always refer to the comprehensive plan in zoning when we take a look at a proposed development. This property, as I described, has those various uses around it, and it is designated for community commercial by our 2017 comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan also identifies trails and open space around the property, but not specifically through the property. You'll see in the development plans that they provide to you that they are addressing that green way that's running between this property and Highway I-25 in their development plans. That is the shortest presentation I've ever done before you, so I'm going to pass this over to over to the applicant or the representative applicant, and he'll take you through his presentation.
Good evening. My name is Carl Barton. I'm with Kimley Horne Associates. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We are going to be presenting to you the Legacy at Jackson Landing. As Planning Director Ungerleiter mentioned, there are four applications, actually four applications in front of you tonight, preliminary planning to development and plat and a final planned unit development and plat. I'm going to be going through the projects. I'm going to provide a project introduction. I'm going to talk about the major elements, kind of addressing the findings and things as that go. It is probably going to feel fairly much like I'm just talking about a single application, but that's really intentional because this is a comprehensive development that we're looking at. So, with that, I do want to go ahead and introduce the development team. So, tonight, we have with us Chris Hake from Legacy Development Partners. And along with him, serving as the developers of the Garrett Companies, we have Matt Weaver, Bethany Rooney, and Madison Hoover, who have joined us this evening. And then, as I mentioned, I'm Carl Barton with Kimley Horne Associates. We also have Brad Cooney with Kimley Horne, and he is the engineer. And for all the technical engineering questions, should you have any, he will be the one to ask. If there's any questions about tenants, specific development mix, and that kind of thing, I will direct those to Chris Hake. So, as we go through, I'll give my presentation while plenty of time for questions. I know many of you were here in May when we presented this project as sketch plans, so you did at that time get to see the Legacy Development Partners and Garrett Companies introduction. Main point to hit here, we've got some very experienced development team with experience in the region and with this particular product type and with some of these end users. So, this is definitely the kind of team that can deliver this project for the Town of Monument. So, I won't go into that in much more detail. So, to say, here's some of the partners that have been worked with in the past, not necessarily making any statements about who's going into this particular development. And so, I'll just... All right. So, I think we're... Nope. It's touchy and laggy. Okay. Project location. So, generally, we're looking at something in the northeast corner of I-25 and Baptist Road, west of Jackson Creek Parkway. So, if you take a left from Jackson Creek Parkway and drive down Blevins Buckle Trail, and then you end in some barriers and a chain there, that is this site. So, it's basically at the end of Blevins Buckle Trail, does directly abut the Monument Marketplace to the north. So, it goes right up to their detention pond. So, that's kind of the bounds of the property. And we've got multiple application sites. So, the preliminary PUD and the final PUD. When I talk about those, I'm making that inclusive of the plats that go along with this. But the way to think about it is, the preliminary PUD covers the whole site, which is approximately 30 acres. And it sort of lays out the groundwork for the development of the entire site. The final PUD is specific to Phase 1, and that is about 18 acres. And we'll get into the details of what exactly is included in that, but that is a little bit more detail to it. But we are asking you this evening to approve both of those. Project overview. So, first thing I want to do is I want to give a kind of a big picture vision for the project. So, it's a regional shopping destination. It's got a national anchor tenant coming in to take the large building there in the northwest corner of the site. When you have a large anchor tenant like that, you start to get other tenants that come in as well. So, it would be bringing to the Town of Monument retail service and dining establishments that are currently in the market. So, all those things are going to be coming along. So, these new amenities for the community is going to be a well-maintained site, of course, with high-quality landscaping and other amenities and convenient and safe parking and circulation. And I would also say adequate, convenient, and safe parking and circulation is all part of the vision. And then, I'll have some time to go through all the different elements. So, you will remember, in May, we were here for a sketch plan approval, which you did give us the approval of that. So, thank you very much. And I will say that generally, this is substantially the same. What we're presenting to you tonight is substantially the same as what you saw at the sketch plan meeting and what you approved. There's been a few tweaks here and there. We've shifted a roadway just a tiny little bit. And like, as Dan mentioned, we've extended the trail per the Trails Master Plan. There was a request of this commission. So, some of those things are included. We made some other tweaks that are different from what you saw here, but it's substantially the same. So, with the four applications, we've got the preliminary PUD and the preliminary plat. Again, it covers the 30 acres, creates nine tracks for the future development, and it also creates a track for the stormwater. The final PUD and final plat go into more detail on specifically what we're generally calling Phase 1. Might call it Phase 1. And that covers lots 1, 2, 3, and Track A, which is where the stormwater is. I think one of the important things to note is, as part of the final development plan, as part of the first phase of this development, all of the big, important infrastructure that's required to serve the entire site at buildout is being constructed as part of that first phase. So, it's all the improvements to the access points. It's all the stormwater facilities, you know, the regional or the site-wide stormwater facility, the utility connections, everything like that, for the entire development of site are really being put in as part of Phase 1. So, that's important to understand. So, I do want to mention real quickly, comprehensive plan compliance. Dan did a really good job of running through that, but with the commercial center land use designation on this site, this proposal meets the types, locations, attributes, and characteristics for that land use designation. It's a commercial center, which is, you know, as the designation is named, in a location where the comprehensive plan calls for it. It has the attributes that the comprehensive plan calls for, unified development, a unified design, required open space, infrastructure utilities, and the other characteristics. So, it has consistency of that development, adequate access and utility. So, it's important that we are making a statement here that it is comprehensive plan compliant. So, with that, I will dive into the preliminary planned unit development. So, what the preliminary planned unit development does is establishes the overall site layout in generally where the buildings are going to go and their general building footprints. If you looked at this very closely, you would see that for these buildings, you know, they're generally depicted on the site plan as rectangles with the building and kind of an open space around. It's a diagrammatic approach because, at the time of final PUD, that's when the real building footprint is going to get nailed down. So, preliminary planning to development, just sort of, this is generally what the site is going to look like, subject to change as we go through final development. But it also does some other things. It establishes the allowed uses on the site. It creates the design guidelines for which all subsequent architecture needs to comply. And it also creates project-specific standards to support this development. So, things like dimensional standards, it's lots and blocks, and that's kind of thing, setbacks, all that kind of stuff, building heights, how open space and plazas will be designed in the future, handles the landscaping, the lighting, and the photometrics and that kind of thing. And it also here identifies the site-wide infrastructure and access required. So, I'm going to talk a little bit more about that right now. Starting with transportation and circulation. So, the preliminary PUD does identify that Blevins Buckle will be expanded to the south. So, if you drive down Blevins Buckle today, that's about half of it. It's about the north half of what is going to be future constructed there. So, we identified that access point. The other thing that this does is it identifies this access point that kind of comes along the east boundary and then heads west into the site. That is an area that's a little bit different than what we saw at sketch plan because after working with Tribeview Metropolitan District, realized we needed to make that a public right-of-way. And so, that kind of comes in at a little bit different angle. And then, also, circulation-wise, we have a truck access route in the northeast corner. So, they have their own access point there. The idea there is we're trying to minimize the conflicts between the delivery trucks that are going to the large retailer and the employees and the guests and visitors to the site and their transportation. So, we are also, as part of this, we are going to be having dual left-turn lanes from Jackson Creek Parkway onto Blevins Buckles. If you go out there today, there's a single left-turn lane. The idea here is that it would be two left-turn lanes. It generally increases the capacity of the intersection with less disruption. So, that's an overview of the transportation and circulation site. Landscaping and open space. We continue to provide open space throughout the site in the form of green spaces and plazas. You can see there's a large green space along the west part of the site. You can also see that the trail, per the Trails Master Plan, has been extended the entire length of that western open space. It'll now connect to the north boundary. You know, we don't have necessarily control over what happens to the north of that boundary, but we are able to do our part here and extend that trail to that point. There will also be a trail that goes around the detention facility there in the southwest corner of the site as well. There's going to be a new sidewalk to Blevins Buckle on the south side. So, there'll be a direct pedestrian connection that entire length as well. Utilities. I think the most important part to note on the utilities is that we're not extending any public utilities to serve the site. So, there's water and sewer available to the site boundary. The extensions within the site are just there to make the connections to the future structure. So, there's no extension of mains or anything like that off-site that are required. And we do have, from Tribeview, that there's sufficient water and sewage capacity to serve the development. And we mentioned also the stormwater retention there in the southwest corner. That does drain out of the southwest corner into the C dot right-of-way. That's how this area of town is designed to function. So, we'll be getting a stormwater permit with C dot. We've already begun that process. That brings me to the final planned unit development. So, it looks pretty similar, doesn't it? It should. But what we're talking about here is, in Phase 1, are the buildings that are highlighted in blue, right? So, we've got the large national retailer there in the northwest corner. To the east of that is a mid-box retailer. It's called Major B. I should also say that the large national retailer frequently referred to it as Major A. So, if you hear me say Major A, that's what I'm talking about. And then, you've got Major B, some inline shops around and adjacent to that. And then, what is commonly referred to as Shop C is the blue building that's located a little bit further to the south. So, that's lots 1, 2, 3, and Track A because, as I mentioned, we have to build all of the required infrastructure at this point. So, the stormwater pond and the outfall for that, the trail, this road that goes along the north of the stormwater pond, to the south of the Major A parking lot, all of that needs to be constructed as part of this Phase 1. And also includes the improvements to Blevins Buckle, the improvements to Jackson Creek Parkway, the traffic signal. I don't know if I remember I mentioned that, but the traffic signal that's going to be placed at Jackson Creek Parkway and Blevins Buckle, that all comes in as part of this final PUD. It all comes in as part of this first phase. Do you want to step back in time a little bit from this evening and talk about the community meeting? One of the recommendations we received from this commission when we were here in May for the sketch plan approval was that it should hold a community meeting, and we did. And so, we did that on June 19th, 2025. We held it down at the TriLakes Chamber of Commerce office. Very nice of them to give us their space, very helpful. And we had about 12 members of the public come out. So, we had some really, some lively discussion, obviously, a lot of questions. People were very curious as to, you know, what's coming into their community, what's finally going to happen on this site. I think the general consensus that we heard is that everybody was expecting this area to be developed and expecting this area to be developed sort of similar to what we're proposing here. Lot of excitement for some of the new restaurants and things like that that might come in as well. So, generally, a pretty positive meeting. There's a couple of things that did come up that I want to highlight here. One is, we did talk at that meeting with the visitors and the members of the public about the pedestrian connections within the site. How are people getting around from their cars to the shops, to between the other shops and that kind of thing? And so, one change that we did make is a direct result of that meeting, directly what we heard, is we've added another... Because there's already one south of the major retailer, we added another north-south sidewalk strip through the parking lot, right? And so, this is in front of the Major B. So, this is new. It's different than even what we had. It's different than what we come out of the sketch plan with. And it's actually different than what we were work... We were, because of the schedule for this project, we were turning away on site designs and everything. But after we had this conversation, we said, okay, we'll go back and we'll make sure we can fit this in. So, there's an added pedestrian connection to basically connect Shop C to Major B. There's widened sidewalk path through the parking lot. And we said there's another one further west that's south of the Major A retailer as well. So, that's one of the changes that we made in response to that public meeting. And the other thing I just want to mention real quick is building height. You know, there are some potential uses that are allowed per the zoning because the future is unknown. And some of the things that have been talked about, but is hotel, potentially office building, things like that, that we would need a little bit of additional height based on the standard commercial zone district. So, there was some concern about that height. And so, we looked at that, and the east end of this property is about quarter mile from the nearest residential property is the Crowflies. So, it's at a significant distance. And so, we don't think that that height will be an issue, will obstruct views or create light pollution or anything like that. And, you know, the lighting is obviously a very important thing. I'll touch on that in more detail in a minute. But, you know, we're pretty confident that the impacts, if any negative impacts to the community, will be pretty minor. But I will also say this, is that because of the way that the PUD process works, if this other use that is a little bit taller is proposed, is moving forward, it will be back in front of this commission at some point as well. So, you have a chance to take a look at it then. Thank you for that little detour. So, utilities. These are very similar to, you know, what we established in the preliminary PUD. That's the whole point. We establish the preliminary PEDs, and then we make sure that we're kind of staying in line with that. So, connections to the existing sanitary and existing water and the stormwater facility are just as are included in the PUD. Again, the important point here, no extensions of public mains. Everything that's constructed is for onsite use. We are thinking about the future phases as we design this final, the utility program for the final PUD and how those will connect. So, it's all kind of baked into this. So, next, I want to talk a little bit about the landscaping and the open space for this. So, the major national retailer that we're working with has very extensive design guidelines. And those cover just about every aspect of the site. But one of the things that they also cover is they cover landscaping. And those standards are calibrated for the different regions of the country. So, and I will also, those standards generally meet or exceed, always meet and generally exceed the standards from the Town of Monument. So, we're designing, in designing to those standards, the landscape plan that comes out of this is something that is very drought tolerant, very responsive to the climate that we're in and is designed to minimize the amount of water use. So, we've got native grasses, you know, very drought tolerant, all of that kind of thing. We do have trees and such as trees and other flowering plantings and things like that in the tree lawn, I mean, the parking lot islands that are included in there. So, there'll be a lot of there, a lot of tree cover. I would do want to highlight this area along the western boundary, this open space along the western boundary. If you look at some of the dark, kind of amoeba-shaped blobs in here, those actually represent a seed mix that is mostly wildflowers. So, this site, when it's in bloom, is going to have a lot of wildflowers. It's going to be a very attractive site from a landscaping perspective. And this is the kind of thing that we are discussing in terms of habitat supporting, right? It's going to attract bees, butterflies, pollinators, and others as well. And then, the way that the landscaping is related to stormwater is that the stormwater quality is all handled in the detention pond. And that is part of this approach. It's called the "for our" approach. I don't remember exactly what those are. If you have specific questions about this, Brad would love to answer them for you. But we have been working with Tribeview on the stormwater design very closely. And so, we have a plan that basically meets and handles the stormwater quality the way it needs to be handled, and it's handled within the detention pond. The detention pond is planted, right? There's plantings and plants in the detention pond. So, when there is a larger storm event, they would be able to benefit, those plantings and things like that would be able to benefit from the stormwater flows. So, we've got a very drought tolerant landscaping, adjusted to our native, our climate that we see here that I think is going to be very, very attractive. Now, lighting. So, there is a photometric plan that's included within the final PUD document. It does have a lot of detail in it. If you happen to have a magnifying glass, you can take a look at it. But I want to kind of cover some of the, here, I want to talk about the approach that's being taken to the lighting on the site. So, the idea with the lighting on the site is it wants to, it is there and designed to create a uniform and consistent lighting. Because there's, lighting levels are one thing, but then also, there's the difference between lighting, right? That's, I think, the technical term for that is actually glare, right? And so, the lighting design is to be, create a uniform and consistent lighting. And it's also following the guiding principles of the dark sky lighting approach. We are well aware of the importance of that to the Town of Monument and this community. So, what we have proposed here are lighting fixtures that direct 100% of the light downward. So, they're the full cutoff lighting fixtures, the 3,000 K correlated color temperature. I'm told that this really helps to minimize the blue light scatter and the sky glow that can happen when you use other temperatures. And light poles that are generally across the site are less than the allowed height as well. And then, advanced lighting control systems. So, what these are, are systems that are attuned to the operations on the site. And that's related to a point that I have down here, which is about safety and security for guests and employees. This is very important. It's incredibly important to the major retailer that's coming in. We've been in many conversations with them, and that has always been top of mind for them, is the safety and security of guests and employees. So, when we talk about auto damage shut-off during non-business hours, I don't want to create an expectation that as soon as the store shuts down, boom, the lights in the parking lot turn off. There's always, you know, safety of the employees and stuff that are still there and the activities that's going on. But it does mean that at night, there's going to be less light. So, the lighting levels that are included do have that, they're designed to maintain visibility both for a safety and a business purposes, but also to ensure that safety and security of guests. We did look at the existing lighting at the Monument Marketplace. And so, that's development right to the north. And the lighting that is proposed here in this photometric plan is less than the lighting that is there, but it still creates a consistent and uniform appearance, you know, on the site and within the locality. It's important. And as I mentioned before, with the landscaping, that this large... And as I mentioned before, with the landscaping, that this large retailer has very rigorous standards. It's the case of lighting as well, as I mentioned, it's always top of mind for them. And this, those standards are also calibrated for the region and the, the place where we are. And so these lighting standards that are included in the photometric plan are consistent with their operational standards. Architecture. One thing that the final PUD does have is it has building elevations for those buildings that are part of this first phase. So this is the elevation that's proposed for the major A retailer. As you can see, it uses a materials palette that is consistent with the design guidelines that are established in the preliminary PUD, but also responds to the, the environment that we're in. We're looking at the colors that, and the materials that are related here to our, our western foothill mountain location. So you've got quality materials, a color palette that responds to the location. And then also we show some locations for signage. Obviously, that's always very important. So we've got locations for signage, and you can see, you know, where the shop windows and, and things like that are going to be as well. That's a couple more views. All these are in the final PUD application packet, but views of what it's going to look like when you're walking up to the front of it, when you're driving along, you have an idea of what that, what that is going to look like. Likewise, there are also elevations for the other buildings. So this is the major B and shops A and B. So this is the building that's directly to the east of the major retailer. So this is what the south facade of that building will look like. Again, color palette, the idea is here is to be consistent across all of the buildings in the development. So that's a very important point. Some more views here. I think this one, you know, shows that there's the idea there'd be some corner feature here. This view was taken, so way to explain that that white sedan is headed east towards Blevins Buckle. That white pickup truck is just entered from Blevins Buckle, it's heading west. So as you come in, the first thing you're going to see would be, you know, this, this tower corner feature of that structure. And this is shop C. So this is a, a aerial view of shop C. Again, consistency, consistent palette of materials, consistent color palette as well. It's very important and it's, it's complies with the preliminary PUD. So I want to thank you very much for your time and listening to your presentation. We'll have time here for questions in just a moment, but I do want to mention some of the next steps, right? Town council, subject to the recommendation from this commission this evening, town council will be our next step, our next visit, and that is early November. We're looking to be in front of them at that time. We're working diligently on construction drawings for the onsite improvement. So stepwise, more and more detail. So we've got some construction drawings that will get reviewed by the town, by the TribeView Metropolitan District. They go into, you know, what is the exact slope of that stormwater line that you're going to put in that location? So that kind of level of detail, we're working diligently, diligently on those. There will be additional finding of PEDs for future phases. We don't know exactly the timing or nature of those as of yet, but you will see them when they come up. And then hoping for tentative groundbreaking on the site in March of 2026. So that's why we're cranking away on these construction drawings so that we can get everything to a point where we could actually start building something. So. And with that, thank you very much for your time this evening. The development team is open for any questions.
All right, thank you. I think what we'll do is open up the, open it up for a public comment at this time. So if there's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't share my presentation lightly, so.
We're good to go?
Just about, yep. I'm just going to jump back in.
All right.
Just to kind of put us back. So not, not to be repetitive, but this all, this all leads to finding a fact. So I want to make sure that we kind of cover some of the things that, that Carl brought up and, and make sure that those, those lead up into a finding a fact at the end of the day to help support your decision. So as, as he discussed and, and I raised at the beginning, the staff took a look at this and worked with our, our consulting engineer and our various referrals throughout the project. This project does, is consistent with the assigned land use designation and other properties of the comprehensive plan. It's also consistent with our land use and PEDs at designation. And assures that the future phases will be consistent and compatible with the first phase of development, which is very important. Stormwater management, we spent a lot of time with them and I, and I know TribeView's been involved with it, with it as well. As we're going through our, our stormwater management plan update, we're, we're, we've become very knowledgeable about it. They've been very good at working with us and, and, and complying with our stormwater management standards. The landscape and open space, this is, this is over the, this is a, a plan that exceeds, at least exceeds my expectations and exceeds what I think what we've envisioned in other projects here in the community. So I might can very, very easily say that the landscape plan and open space standards have, have been met and they have addressed our trail system desires outlined in our trails and open space plan. Site circulation is, is, was presented to you tonight. The development not only provides for onsite pedestrian and vehicular circulation, but it also appropriately addresses the impacts that this site might have on the existing road network on Jackson Creek Parkway. That in fact was something that you, you demanded it during the sketch plan review, that, that they, they spent a little extra time on making sure that they address the potential impacts on Baptist and, and, and other intersections in the area offsite. And they've done that in the, in their traffic studies and in the improvements that they presented to you tonight. Parking, the site is definitely parked, so it does comply with our parking standards. Photometrics, this is something, this is one of the reasons why they didn't come back, come to you during the first meeting. We spent a lot of extra time working with them, just trying to make sure that we're addressing our lighting standards and then maybe even trying to exceed some of those. And they've done just that. The site is going to meet some of our dark, our dark sky initiatives that the council is thinking about and we're talking about in our comprehensive plan. And, and more importantly, it maintains a safe site. That, that's going to be a serious discussion that we're going to be having as we're, we're pushing and, and prodding and, and dark sky initiatives here in the community. We want, we want to protect the sky, but at the same time, we need to make sure the sites are safe, that your eyes aren't adjusting as you're going from one, from one area to another and potentially causing an unsafe condition. And they've, they've spent a lot of time on that and, and appropriately pushed and pulled through the process to make sure that this site met their expectations as well as identified and addressed the community's desire to, to protect its skies and adjacent properties. Architectural design, the, the architecture that's being presented to you in the final PUD for phase one is, certainly meets our standards. Staff was very pleased with the, the, the color scheme and the, and the, and the format of the architecture. Sign program is also included in that. And this, this standard is then established and will hold for the future phases of this project. So as we're coming, they're coming back to you for future phases or future final, future final PEDs for other buildings, we're going to be looking back at the, the, the set standard of this first phase. Both the preliminary plat and the, and the final plat conform with local, the local and state statutes. That's all we're really, really looking for is to make sure the plat conforms. So when it's recorded, it's a legal document. And then the PUD, it's the final PUD and the preliminary PUD sets the tone. And the final, final PUD establishes what they're going to build at this, as part of this first phase. And those have been reviewed and, and comply with our codes and ordinances in comprehensive plan. So I'm not going to read the draft finding a fact to you because you've got that in your packet, but it, it's pretty extensive. It covers a lot of things. So you're, while it is a draft, so you're welcome to, to add, subtract, modify that, that finding a fact. But it's very important that, that finding a fact is part of your recommendation. And then it's submitted to council so that they can use that in support of what their ordinance is approving this project, hopefully. So staff is recommending the, the following action. A motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plan unit development and the preliminary plat for legacy at Jackson Landing and approval of the final plan unit development and final plat for legacy at Jackson Landing Phase One, located at the southwest corner of Blevins Buckle Trail and Jackson, Jackson Creek Parkway, is supported by the draft finding a fact and, and described by the documents referenced in the staff's report. And you'll see there's an extensive list of documents that we've included in that. Those are also on documents on demand if anyone wants to take a look at those. But it's been a pleasure working with these folks. They've, they've really taken to harp the community's desire to see a, a quality development at this location that addresses the, the needs and, and the, the desires of, of the community along Jackson Creek Parkway and throughout the town. So I thank them for that. And that, that's, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dan. We'll now open up the public hearing for any comments from the public, anyone in the room that would like to make any comments. Please come on up. If you could identify yourself and sign in there.
I'm Sarah Petrie. I live in Jackson Creek neighborhood with a west facing yard that overlooks an open space directly across from Jackson, Jackson Creek, directly across from this development. And so I'm very close with my neighbors and we all communicate. So I'm happy to bring a lot of this information back to them. The only thing that I heard today that, that I'd like more information about, more fact finding about is the potential for buildings that have some height. And what I heard was a bit of a dismissal about the concern. And yes, distance wise, we're not, you know, back to back our homes, but the way that homes sit, whether below or higher than this site, I think come into play for view. For example, a lot of the other buildings that are in the area, we overlook that. Even if it's at a distance, it is still a, in our line of sight. So just want to be sure that the science behind it and the fact finding behind it is respectful to the fact that many of these homes are overlooking that area. And the angle comes into play more than the mileage distance. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Petrie. Anyone else in the room would like to make a public comment? Ray, do we have anyone online?
At this time, there's no one online.
Seeing no other public comments either in the room or online, we'll close the public hearing and move on to comments and questions from those on the planning commission, Commissioner Green.
I want to thank you, I want to thank staff for requiring the design guidelines. I appreciate it and thank the applicant for putting in such detailed design guidelines. That really helps. I have a couple of questions. Staff, does TribeView on the water under this property or is it dedicated?
So.
We haven't discussed it to the level that was described tonight. Typically, there's a pond that's going to be maintained by TribeView. It is owned by the town.
No, I mean water rights under the property.
Let me try again.
I, I thought that TribeView, unlike the old, this part of the town, already owns the water under property?
This is.
Is it dedicated by development as they happen?
My apologies, that's what you're talking about, stormwater. This is in the TribeView Metropolitan District and they will be serving this property. So, and we have an, and we have a, we have a letter indicating that they are going to be serving the site. So I can't answer much more than that.
Okay. Do you now, are you, so do you have water rights or have you given them to TribeView?
So we've been working with TribeView on getting an ability to serve letter and, and looking even at, we've actually kind of gotten to the point of some figuring out what is the demand, you know? The demand obviously goes into that, but some, some fairly detailed. And I got a letter today, mail today from Jim over at TribeView that we have the, the sufficiency to serve letter. But to answer your question, the way that is, is worked is that there's a certain amount of water that needs to be purchased. So the, the process through TribeView is fee and lieu, fee and lieu to buy the water rights. So the site doesn't bring the water rights, TribeView has them and we buy them from TribeView.
So they already own, they've already adjudicated what's under your property?
Yes.
You can't go sell them somewhere else?
No, and it, and you know, and I'm maybe speaking a little bit out of turn here, but I, the severed water rights, if there were any under this property, are not part of the, says, has not been part of our planning process to consider to use any existing water rights that I'm aware of.
I have one more question for you.
Yes.
Just, this is just kind of a general question because your group, your team has done a lot of similar developments kind of in the Rocky Mountain region, in this area. I'm curious, do you consider this sort of your run of the mill project? Or maybe smaller or like one of the best you've done? What, how do you kind of rank it compared to the others?
That's an interesting question. I mean, I think that, and I will let Chris probably respond to a little bit on this, but I will say, I will preface that response by saying that one of the fun things about real estate development is that every site in town is so different that we can't do a run of the mill project. Because in this instance, you know, here in Monument, we've got this, these beautiful surroundings and a really unique opportunity in terms of land and a market to be served. So certainly not, I wouldn't say that this is run of the mill at all. And I wouldn't say any of our projects are, but that's my take on it. Chris, if you want to respond to that.
It's a good question. For Legacy Development Partners being a newer company, this project could not be more of a priority for our entire team. Being that Legacy was just formally founded at the beginning of this year, I personally have a lot more experience than just the beginning of this year. But starting this new venture with the Garrett Companies and, and myself, there is no opportunity that we are working on that has a higher priority. So we've put extra effort into every part and piece of this project to make it special for the community. So it's something that everyone can be, including yourself, everyone can be very excited about when it comes out of the ground and they can shop and eat at this project. So extreme high importance. And we look at this as much more than just a, a, one project. It's a very high important project for us.
Thank you.
Sure.
Chris, you might as well stay up there.
Okay.
You just heard from one of our residents here, down here at Jackson Creek, where I can assume that she is looking to the west, that view is going to be obstructed by any building that's roughly over 30, 40 feet, I would assume. I haven't sat on her balcony and looked at how it sets. My concern is, is obviously as we design this and we build up, I mean, I'm sure you're talking to the public, you're talking to TriLakes Cares, you're talking to city council. My concern is, as a resident in that same neighborhood, right now to the south of Baptist, we still have lighting conditions that truly affect the entire neighborhood because they're overpopulated, they're over bright, they're over, and this is at all hours of the night. I understand the safety aspect as a former law enforcement officer, as a former marine for 30 years. But I want to make sure that that is not negated for the public because of what we deemed a tree, you know, our, our population growth is growing. But still, safety in relation to what Monument truly has is very, very pristine here alone. What's, right now, you can't tell us what the height is, I get it. What's right now, you can't tell us what the height is. I get it. You know, as that major retailer comes in, we welcome the taxation base that's coming in, but what can, what things are you considering are no goes in the future if you were to build by height? What are, what is your maximum height that truly you're looking at?
I can, I can speak to the specifics. So the preliminary PUD has allows for fifty foot height.
Hundred percent.
Yeah. The major retailer will not be that tall. It's about thirty five feet.
Yes.
Give or check some change. And that's standard, right? You, if you wonder how tall that is, if you go look at one of these major retailers, like that's it. So that's how tall it is. So but there is a preliminary PUD does request a height allowance for fifty feet. And that that is really driven by the the potential for a hotel. Fifty feet gets you about a four story hotel. So if you can imagine that. You know, I understand clearly the the importance of the to this community of the it was a pristine was the word you look used, the pristine natural environment.
You live here?
No.
Okay, I just want to make sure that's clear.
Yeah, I don't live here. But so, I mean, that's, that's clearly top of mind. And I think that really shows up in the in the lighting.
Hundred percent. And that's, that's exactly where I'm going to go to next is because again, those individuals to the south of Baptist are dealt with ambient lighting, lighting that is reflective. It meets dark sky standards, but it's not meeting the, you know, it blokes out the entire segment of lighting inside that southern half of Baptist.
Yeah, I'm not familiar, not being a resident, not familiar with that condition.
And that's, that's great. But I want to make sure that as we look at height of the building, got it, you know, fifty feet is allowed to understood. If that major retailer comes in at thirty five, great, you know, but just looking at that slope in relation to as the resident had mentioned.
Yes.
It's that's key. Second becomes that ambient light, dark sky, I think, says twelve feet is the maximum or the maximum height of those poles. And with twelve feet, three hundred kilo or three thousand.
I I'm not an expert in the dark sky. And so I don't want to speak out of turn as related to the pole height, but I believe it is taller than than twelve.
Yeah, why don't I jump in for a second here? So building height wise, any future building is going to come that's going to come in is going to come back before you.
Yes.
So you'll be able to look at it as a part of the PUD and how it impacts the benefit and all you're going to get a full fledged look at that that project. And be able to get into the detail, talk about that. The, as far as lighting goes, that's, that's been fully reviewed by our engineers through this delighting delight, the lighting program that they provided us. And I can assure you, we will continue to do that for this project and future projects that come before us. So the lighting standards, we went back and forth with them on number of lighting standards, height of lighting standards, temperature of lighting standards, making sure you saw the picture of the one lighting standard sample there. It faces down. The buildings themselves, the lighting standards are pointed up alongside the building and it's shielded at the top. So they've gone very far. I would challenge the sites that you might be thinking of in other locations if they really do comply.
Sure.
But I can assure you through the review, the vigorous review that we've done in in our department with our team and with this group. These, these do comply with our lighting standards, number one, and they are setting the tone for future dark sky. Just the dark, addressing dark sky issues. And we'll be talking about that. But they've been, they've been great working with us. And you're still going to have other bites at the apple as we're moving forward with the future phases.
And Dan, please understand and please understand, folks, what I'm doing is putting this on the record. Simply because when we go to the next stage and we still don't meet that, that resident is still going to be up here asking, why wasn't it done? And that's why we want to make sure that we're truly putting this on the record across the board is because as you mentioned, you don't live here. And in that, it's more so that when buildings are built to include apartment buildings and everything else, there becomes such a compactness of people that it's almost like we've lost that feeling of Monument. So we're very cautious of how it's presented across the board. And we want to just make sure that it's on the record, got it, done great things. We need you here as a revenue base. I get it. But again, behind the scenes, that resident has first and foremost, in my opinion, the most objective aspect to make sure that her house and her views that she bought into twenty, thirty years ago is fully funded and fully done. She gets the opportunity to enjoy it.
Yeah, understood. And I appreciate that. And I appreciate the level of detail that you're giving to this. And I appreciate putting it on the record because as Dan mentioned, any building, the next phases and things like that, I think this is the key point. It was going to be back in front of this commission. I mean, we can't. We're not in a position to fully evaluate the impact of a fifty foot building right now because we don't have a site plan. We don't know. We don't, A, we don't know if there will ever be one. And B, we don't know exactly where it'll be and how it'll be oriented and things like that. But I will say there are a lot of things that you can do during the site planning process to ameliorate these impacts of light and height and things like that. I just recently worked on a project up in the mountains where it was about how we designed the lighting on a specific side of the building. So you, the final PUD process for those next phases will give you that opportunity to have that level of examination to address.
Hundred percent. Well, burst in it. I just wanted to make sure that it was on the record that the public knew that we're still fighting for those entities that still preserve Monument for what it is.
Appreciate that very much.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner Trier. Commissioner Parr?
Utilities, you mentioned you had that the water and sewer was already already on site and you wouldn't be going out, but you did mention about gas or electric and where that would be coming from. Or do you know yet at this point?
I will say that that is in progress. We have had conversations with the dry utility providers. I am not, I don't have the specifics well enough in my head to speak authoritatively on that. But from what I understand is that we don't have any, you know, any unusual obstacles to providing those those services, particularly electric.
Thank you. Commissioner Hours.
First, I want to say to the Chris that what you're doing for this community is going to be great. Because you've picked a team that's working with a planning director. And the planning director that we have works very hard, as you know, to make sure that a development that comes in here meets all the standards, but at the same time permits you to do the work. And I think you have a team that you've selected that we're going to end up with a great project. And I think you're listening to the community. And I think that we're going to have a great project. Now, the only question that I really have is there's going to be great access to this. And this may be something that you have no control over, but I'm going to bring it into the conversation only because I think it's it's a concern to me, and I think it'll be a concern to other people in the community. And that is all the access of any significance is off of Jackson Creek into your development. And that the access between your development and all of this. It's not a very good access. Now, that's not necessarily something that you can control. Because different people on the land, different things. But I do believe that that's something that needs to be looked at because a lot of the people that's going to want to come into your development, when you get a major retailer in there. When you get a nice restaurant in there, a lot of those people are going to be coming from the north. They're going to be going into Walmart. They're going to be going into all these other places. And they're not necessarily, but they probably will. But I'm talking about convenience to people moving around in this major development. Not having a good access from the existing development into this new development. unfolding you bought a piece of property. You're developing it. It's going to be a great, but I think that's a concern that needs to be considered as we go forward in this community. Whoever can make things like that happen better. Other than that, I, I'm just really pleased. Like I say, I've been on this commission for longer than a lot of people like for me to have been, but but this is the best development. The best group of people that has ever set before this commission, in my opinion.
Kind words. And second, thank you for your service to the community for all those years. That's great. We really appreciate that. We appreciate the the kind words. And we appreciate the, I think, the recognition of the circulation pattern that we have, right? That where the site is, and there are certain things that are fixed already. I do think that we have our attempt to address that has been to spend a lot of time looking very closely at how do we best address turns from Jackson Creek? How do we address that section of Jackson Creek, of, excuse me, of Blevins Buckle between Jackson Creek and the intersection where you enter into the hit our property? So that has come through, that attempts to solve that problem have really focused on acquiring additional right of way where needed in order to create a more robust system. That that process is already underway with Triview. They're already, you know, working through that with the adjacent property owners to get that right away, both for Blevins Buckle, which the south half of Blevins Buckle, which we knew from the jump at the start of this project, that was going to be necessary. We're going to need to do that. But what came through the conversations with Triview is no, actually, I think we need to improve that southern piece. If you think about that area that's south of that intersection where you've the main entrance that that is now public right away that I highlighted on the map. That should help because if you're coming from the north, you won't necessarily be required to make that right hand turn into the development. You can go further south on a public road to enter. That should help a little bit. But I think the other thing is really the dual lefts from Jackson Creek. That will have a big impact, a positive impact. And one of the ways, and we examined it very closely. So you know, if you got a certain amount of cars that are trying to make a left hand turn, you can either put them in one long line or multiple shorter lines. And the multiple shorter lines, dual lefts really ended up being the most, the best way to get the most traffic through and have the least impact south on Jackson Creek Parkway, right? If you have that one single line, it's more likely to spill out. So we looked at the taper length and all that things. And then also spent a lot of time thinking about how people are going to make that turn and get into the line once they make the left on the Blevins Buckle, how they're going to get in there. So it has been highly analyzed and it is, I think, for the, you know, for the situation that we have, I think it's, it is going to provide that sufficient and the guest experience that is required. Did I answer your question? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bomer.
So yes, a lot of good work. We don't see the behind the scenes details and that's involved. And that's great. The way you succinctly put it up here, very clean. I understand what you're saying. And I, I second that. I concur with what he said. And I'm glad you addressed that dual left lane and the traffic light because one of the reasons when I first moved here that deterred me from moving into like Ms. Petrie's neighborhood was I thought, oh, my God, if I have to turn left in the morning to get on Jackson Creek, I'm going to sit here for ten, fifteen minutes. So I'm thinking, or I'm hoping, like you said, that positive impact where the traffic light can almost be synced. So it'll give those guys a break so that they can actually get in to turn left and get on I twenty five fairly quickly at those times when they have to get to work in the morning. Other than that, you you answered everything. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of questions. A couple of items that are critical for me. Number one will be the intersection at Blevins Buckle and the timing of that reconstruction of that intersection on Jackson Creek Parkway and the location of the lights in the double turn lane. I understand that that's also part of a longer term plan based on your traffic study of Triview putting in a roundabout down off of Lion's Tail and Jackson Creek Parkway and wondering what the timing looks like between those two events. So I'm not sure who can address that for me.
Not able to speak to the timing of that, particularly as it relates to the roundabout on on Lion's Tail.
How about the timing of the full motion stoplight?
Yeah, so all of that has to go in as part of phase one. So there is not an interim, there will not be an interim condition where, for instance, the left turn lanes are in, but there's no traffic signal. All getting done at the same time. We're looking to break ground in March twenty twenty six. That's kind of the first date we have when it comes to more specifics of the timing of the intersection. We don't have that. We don't know that yet, but it is all getting done as part of this first phase and will need to be done. Yeah, prior to CO for the national retailer, I can't.
Okay, so we don't need to condition it to say that it, there won't be a CO issued until the that phase is completed at that intersection. You're, you're saying that that's part of
Yes, our, our national tenant has already conditioned it for us. Okay, so yes.
All right. Chair Ugly, the the site plan improvement agreement that will be signed by both, both the town and developer will probably, it will identify a lot of that information right in there just to codify it on our, our part. So we understand that we have to get this stuff done as well to meet the, their, their, their timing and vice versa. So but thank you for bringing that up.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that. Sure.
It was projected as a consideration, not necessarily a requirement. We've obviously got to look at how the rest of this area develops out over the next twenty plus years as to understand what is it going to be a requirement? So can't really give you specifics on timing, but by twenty fifty, it was noted as a consideration.
Right. I noticed Commissioner Hours has brought that up in the past too, that that and exit and entrance on the west side of the King Super Shopping Center. I think that even included in that plan is by twenty fifty, that be would be turned into a right in, right out. And in conjunction with putting in that roundabout at Lion's Tail. So that's, that's all part of that, that long term plan. I just didn't know if that was going to be tied in with your project at this point. And it doesn't sound like it is. Okay. All right. This.
Sure, go ahead.
Always ask questions. It's not supposed to be asked. The one thing you've said, and you may say it's coming, and I'll live with that. But it's planning commissioners. The minute we leave this room, we get out on the street and our neighbors and friends are going to say, so in this new development, who's going to be the national retailer that's coming in? When will that name be made available to the community?
I am not the right person to answer that question.
I know. And I may not get an answer, but I have to ask the question. If you can't, if you don't ask the question, you can't get an answer.
I think it's, it's probably one of the worst kept secrets of who who we're talking about. Due to confidentiality provisions, I cannot stand up here and say who it is.
That's fine, but I.
By the time we break grounds, they will have purchased their piece of property from us. It'll be public record at that point. And at that point, you'll know exactly who it is, if you don't already.
My philosophy is if you don't ask the question, you can't.
Understood. Appreciate you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hours. One other topic for me is the is a soft surface trail on the west side. I, I think that at some point, as a, as a town, as a commission, town council, whatever, as part of our comprehensive plan, we need to look at hard surface trails and making those connectable within different developments. And so I guess my, my question to you is, what prevents us from, what prevents you from going ahead? And I don't think it needs to be ten feet wide, frankly. I think an eight foot hard surface trail is going to be more than adequate for the needs. And I noticed that when it takes that turn back to the east, it's reduced to a five foot width. And so my question is, can't we maintain an eight foot width for the entirety and also keep that as a hard surface trail at that point?
So is what you're, is the question? is what you're, is the question? So is is the question, is the question, would would the your preference be that the the soft surface trail current, because currently right now it was out of the plans up. I had to look at it myself to make sure I remember right. You have a ten foot soft surface trail along the western mountain.
That's correct.
One that's, then I think the ten feet probably comes from the the cop, the Trails Master Plan. Probably where we we pulled that number from. It's pretty standard for this trail like this. And then the five foot trail is is not part of the, it goes around the detention pond, and it is not intended to be part of the the regional or local trail system. It's specific to the site for people to take a stroll with their their dogs or lunch or what have you. So that's, you know, what we what's currently shown on the plan. But is the question is whether or not that could be an eight foot hard surface?
Yeah, I just think that if 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 we really want to achieve the goals that we set for ourselves as a community to to make sites more accessible, then at some point, we we need to take a look at hard surface trails within the town limits and try to make that more connective between developments, between businesses. And and make it a little bit more easy to traverse on a bike, by foot, whatever the case may be.
You know, I think the, from a space perspective, we'd have to take a look as whether or not an eight foot could go in the, if you think about the the area around the pond, right? So it has some grade differences and like that. And if you add three feet to that, you had more because you have to put the, get the angles correct and things like that. So I think from that perspective, I don't necessarily know how much the surface of it matters as much, but the the width, we'd have to take a look and see if that's what the impact of that would be. And I think ultimately for that change to be implemented, we would be Yep.
Would would it be possible to keep the trail that is around the pond, the width as contemplated? And have the public one go hard surface, but be eight feet versus soft surface ten?
Yeah, I mean, I I I won't speak for the other commissioners, but I mean, if you, anyone else wants to, you know, I'm seeing some heads and yeah, I I would. I mean, I don't know about the planning department. If you're going to be okay with that, Dan, or if we're moving beyond what we should.
I I appreciate the conversation. And this is actually something we're going to be talking about as part of our comprehensive plan. There's a, there's a hierarchy of trail systems that we have in town or we hope to have in town. And cost of trail system, both for stormwater management and just the cost of the trail and maintenance and so on. There's also accessibility that has to come into play. So it's a bigger, it's a bigger scheme. If they're willing to work with us, I don't have any issues with the width changes that they're proposing. I just don't not, I I don't want to make a quick decision on on does the trail system along I twenty five become a, it's either soft or hard. The, there's a lot to be said for a slower softer path. It doesn't, it allows for water filter water to to work. I'm just missing my words today, but it's a lot, it soaks in water rather than sends it off to the side. So I I would like more time to talk about that with the community as part of the comp plan. And if they're willing to work with us as we move forward on on something, then we can certainly adjust that as when we get to the construction drawings.
Yeah, I think I'm, yeah. I don't have any reason not to to rely on your ability to talk to them and their willingness to 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 maybe we can meet in the middle somewhere. I just think that at some point, as a town, we need to say, this is really what we want to have. And and you're right, accessibility, I mean, folks with you know, wheelchair and that type of thing, a soft surface isn't ideal for them necessarily. And you know, all those different things, kids on on a bicycle. That's what I'm thinking of.
I mean, and we'll get into this later, but as soon as you make it a hard surface, then it has to be accessible. And and that changes grading and layout and design. And we have another site that we're working with now that we have this the sidewalk or trail system that runs through the development is hard surface. And the other parts that are are connecting neighborhoods are going to be soft surface. And not necessarily always meeting ADA, the although the benches and the amenities will be closer to the hard surface areas. So I'd like more time to talk with you and the community about that before we lock in on this one. And then as long as Chris is is open to talking about as we move forward and adjusting. I think I think we got a great, I think we're heading in the right direction.
Appreciate that. That's no issue. One last question, really. Will you have a lot of bike racks in front of tenant A, Major A, or do you know if there will be bike racks throughout the development?
I've got to imagine there will be bike racks throughout the development, probably enough that meets code. Okay, great.
Okay. Great. All right. Commissioner Hours?
Yeah, got another question now. Yeah. No, talking, since he brought up the bike racks, what kind of slope is there going to be from the major retailer south on that parking lot?
That is not a question.
Yep. So for the first, outside of Major A, for the first hundred and fifty feet outside the doors, one and a half percent max. That is a tenant requirement. Outside of that hundred and fifty feet, it's three percent max throughout the rest of the development for paved surfaces. Obviously, once we get towards the pond, that's going to change. We'll have pond sites so upset, five to one, four to one, much steeper, obviously. But from the paving perspective, one and a half percent max for the first hundred and fifty feet outside of that, three percent max.
Okay, what caused me to ask that question? When you're designing where the carts are placed, I've lived in communities where there's a slope and citizens have trouble sometimes getting the cart in the racks. And you know where those carts often go is in our citizens' cars when the wind blows here in Monument. So
Certainly.
Keep that in mind on how you can, and you only have so much control. But if there's anything you can do to help reduce the chances that our people are going to say, yes, that cart rack is just too far for me to walk. My God, that's twenty steps. You understand what I'm saying?
We we certainly do. We have plenty of cart corrals spaced throughout the site. A a majority of them within that first hundred and fifty feet to keep the slopes down so that we don't have errant carts roaming the parking lot, looking for cars to hit.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't resist once he brought up the
Any other questions or comments from the commission? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion on this particular item.
Commissioner Hours? My motion, I make a motion to approve of the preliminary plan unit development, preliminary plat legacy of Jackson Landing. And the final plan, new development in the final plat legacy of Jackson Landing Phase One as supported by the attached findings of fact.
I'll second that. Dan, can this be one vote? Not not two, not four?
It could be a single vote. It's, there's no real, unless you're adding conditions to one specific part or not, I, it could be one motion.
For for your convenience and and anybody who has to come back to this development in the future, when you do your ordinances and resolutions, you might want to put zoning with zoning and subdivision with subdivision. So you have preliminary and final plat, preliminary and final P U D as opposed to the way it was presented. Does that make sense? Yeah. So you have your zoning together and your subdivision together.
We we can certainly consider that. It we we separated phases because it would first phase was preliminary plat and preliminary P U D. And then they just happened to come back with the final plat for phase one and the final P U D for phase one. So that's why they're separated the way they are.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying.
That's, yes, I second that.
Cool. All right, we have a motion in a second. Ray, can you take role, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Ugly.
Yes.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Hours.
Yes.
Commissioner Parr.
Yes.
Commissioner Trujillo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Ballmer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes six in favor and unopposed.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you to the applicant. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on, non agenda public items, any reports, communications or announcements by staff or the commission?
Oh, I have two announcements. First is we have a an active shooter training program here on October twenty ninth from eight to nine thirty. You probably received, or if you haven't already, you will be receiving an invitation to that. Unfortunately, in today's world, we all need to be we all need to be trained and understand that we're, we are positioned in the public where we should be able to protect ourselves and act act appropriately if something like that were to occur. So I would recommend if you have the time to come to that, please join us. And the second one on on is that on Wednesday night next week, we will, or I'm sorry, Thursday night next week, we will be having our community workshop at Presbyterian Church in downtown Monument. It's from six to eight. It's going to be a continuing conversation about our comprehensive plan update. Our focus will be less on existing conditions and more on where we're going. So it's our visioning at the beginning of our vision process for what we want for downtown monument, what we want for Jackson Creek Parkway, what we want as a community as a whole. I'm looking forward to, we'll have the full consultant team out here for that kickoff event. And you'll start to see a lot more information pop up on our website after that event is over. So please join us. Welcome your, welcome your neighbors, the friends that you like, bring them along with as well. So those are really my two two announcements.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Anything from other commissioners?
I liked what you had to say about bike lanes and I Santa Fe Trail runs right in front of my house, and it's it's becoming dangerous for bikes because it just isn't maintained enough. And not, I I don't ride on it much anymore, right on the streets.
I think we've had a lot of rain, a lot more rain and which definitely does a lot more washout and then requires more maintenance work.
Yeah, but it
Requires more maintenance. Yeah.
Still, yeah. It would still be nice to see. I think people would commute more and bike more if there were accommodating trails.
So the reason I, and I appreciate you letting me talk during that part of the, your deliberation, but if you were to just take the the east side of the highway with the open space and creeks and that run through there, there's about, if you count both sides of those those areas, there's about twenty six feet, twenty six I don't know the same miles, but it seems like it's too much, but I think it is. It's, it, there's thirty about thirteen miles each way that where we could be putting trails to connect neighborhoods in different places together. Now, that costs a lot of money. It requires grading changes and requires a lot of things. But those are things that over the night and to by the year twenty forty, or hopefully sooner, we could have start building some of those just in those areas. And then we're going to be talking a lot about just how do we get across the highway or underneath the highway along Dirty Woman Creek and working our way out to Dirty Woman Creek Park and and more importantly, out to the other trail, natural trail systems that we are so fortunate to be inside of and adjacent to. So we're going to be talking a lot about trails through just Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, you'll you'll probably see a lot of mud on my on my legs just from being out there with our consultant teams, just showing them all these places where we potentially could have those connections. So we're going to be talking about soft trails versus hard trails. How do I get down to that, to that, that, that creek area from Diamond Lake Road to go under a tunnel? It's going to be a challenge. But it it'll be less of a challenge than crossing over the top of it, unless we've got some really good wildlife that that somehow is lobbying the 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 powers that be. So this is going to be a fun conversation.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you. Yes, our next meeting is November twelfth. And if no other comments, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight, adjourn tonight's meeting with the planning commission.
So moved.